Good evening, welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 14, 2011. If you are watching live on Monday, February 14, we invite your call in for comments and questions. The caller number 769-1677. And as always, you can watch our meetings on Verizon FiOS cable, on Cablevision, or on live web streaming at PCTV76.org. Our couple of announcements about next meeting. Next meeting's tomorrow night, Tuesday, February 15, is the annual tax grievance hearing night. And that will take place from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Clinton Street Center, which is just at the corner of Wheeler Avenue and Clinton Street in the Senior Center. So you're not required to attend that in order to file a tax grievance, but you are welcome to attend if you have filed your papers to make the case before the Village Board, which serves as the Board of Assessment Review. Our next regular meeting is Monday, February 28, at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00 PM. We have no work session next week because Monday is President's Day. And then lastly, I wanted to add that our meeting of Monday, February 28, will begin at 7:00 PM with a neighborhood meeting. We're inviting the neighbors in the Maple Hill area to come and discuss the village's potential interest in relocating Village Hall to the Methodist Church. Some of you have heard about that through the press or through the announcements we have made. It involves a possible three-way real estate exchange. None of this will happen unless it turns out that we can make each of the pieces work and that they make economic sense, saving money over the long haul. But the strategy would be for the village to sell this building, the one we're in now, 80 Wheeler Avenue, to a private owner and return it to the tax rolls, and then buy the Methodist Church site at Bedford Road and Maple Hill and re-establish Village Hall in that location. The expectation is if we did that, the police department would remain here on a lease-back basis at 80 Wheeler Avenue because the police department is difficult and expensive to move and the use is not as well-suited to the residential zoning up at Maple Hill. And then lastly, the Methodist Church, having sold their property to us at Maple Hill, would propose to buy from the village the currently vacant old recreation center, which is at Great Oak Lane and Bedford Road. So a couple of neighbors in the Maple Hill area have expressed some interest in what our plans are and express an interest in exploring what their concerns might be, and so we're inviting anybody in the neighborhood, as well as anyone who has other reasons to express their interest, to attend at 7:00 PM on Monday, February 28. And I might add as well that we are enthusiastically seeking anybody who might have a development interest in buying this building at 80 Wheeler Avenue. I've been through the building now twice with two different potential buyers, including one today and have another one coming in a couple of days. But the more people who are aware of it, I think the better off we would be. It's an interesting opportunity for a building that could not get much closer to the train station without being on the train itself. So a couple of other announcements to make, and one is there was a happy event at the Pleasantville Firehouse last Wednesday night, and that was the anniversary dinner honoring Russ Tompkins. Russ is an eighty-some-odd-year resident of this village, and he was being honored by the Pioneer Hook &amp; Ladder Company for seventy, repeat, seventy consecutive years of service. Russ is a former chief, a former captain, a former fire commissioner for the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department, and continues as a senior member to be active in many different ways. One of those circumstances where you realize amid the zillions of hours contributed by so many good people in this village, there are some role models who will keep us working for a very long time in order to meet the kind of record that they have amassed. So thank you very much to Russ Tompkins and to his family, who is justly proud of him. It is almost unimaginable to consider that this is a man who served the village in the role of active and now senior fireman for seventy years. We had a work session earlier this evening with Rich Sarfity and Sal Skolnick, our two co-executive directors of the Pleasantville Music Festival in recent years, and it follows up a discussion we had earlier in the week with the Peak Radio Station and Jason Finkelberg, who we like to think of as a Pleasantville resident, but who actually is just over the line in Mount Pleasant, I think, a Pleasantville address. We have quite a bit of optimism for the coming year and quite a bit of optimism for some sponsors that will help make the festival a success, and so we're happy to announce that the Pleasantville Music Festival for 2011 is up and running, and it will take place on Saturday, July 9, at Parkway Field. So there'll be lots more to say about that in the weeks and months to come, but mark your calendars right now, Saturday, July 9, for the next edition, I guess, the seventh year of the Pleasantville Music Festival. Also wanted to mention that there is a village election that takes place on Tuesday, March 15. There are two trustee seats, that of Mindy Barard and Ryan Skarstad. They are both running for reelection and are running unopposed. And the village justice position currently occupied by John Curley is also up for election. John Curley is running for reelection, and he is opposed by Joseph Stargiati, who will also be running for the village justice. So that election again is Tuesday, March 15. It takes place, voting takes place from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the old Ambulance Corps building adjacent to the football field. Recall, you may recall from previous meetings, that the Ambulance Corps has relocated to larger space in Thornwood, and so that building is now available to us, and that's where the village elections will take place. And then lastly, I wanted to read to you the press release that was released by Westchester County District Attorney Janet DeFiore this afternoon, and it reports on the results of the grand jury proceeding investigating the death of Dan Roy Henry and the event that took place at the Thornwood Shopping Center on the morning of October 17, 2010. It's a bit of a long statement, but I think, given the gravity of this matter, it warrants reading in its entirety, so I will do so. The headline is "Statement by Westchester County District Attorney Janet DeFiore Regarding an Officer Involved in Shooting in the Town of Mount Pleasant on October 17, 2010." A Westchester County grand jury has completed its investigation into the tragic shooting death of Dan Roy Henry Jr. during the early morning hours of October 17, 2010, at the Thornwood Shopping Center in the town of Mount Pleasant, New York. Immediately after the shooting, an investigation began into the circumstances surrounding Mr. Henry's death. As part of the investigation, more than 400 people were interviewed by investigators in New York and elsewhere, including as far away as Florida. Numerous items of physical evidence were collected from the scene and forensically analyzed by experts in ballistics, toxicology, accident reconstruction, DNA, and trace evidence. The investigation was conducted by four law enforcement agencies, the Westchester County District Attorney's Office, including the district attorney's investigators in the high-technology unit, the New York State Police, the Westchester County Department of Public Safety's forensic identification unit, and the Mount Pleasant Police Department. Also participating in the investigation was the Westchester County Medical Examiner's Office and the Westchester County Department of Laboratories and Research. Following an exhaustive and thorough review of the evidence, the grand jury, which began hearing testimony on January 10, 2011, has concluded its investigation pursuant to an order of the Westchester County Court that impaneled the grand jury sitting in this manner, the following is the only information that is permitted to be disclosed by law. The grand jury heard testimony from eighty-five witnesses. Of those witnesses, forty-six civilians, many of whom were Pace University students and were present at the shopping center at the time of the shooting, testified as to what they witnessed at the time of the incident. The two passengers who were with Mr. Henry in his car at the time of the shooting also testified. Police personnel who testified included four police officers who responded to the initial call of a disturbance at Finnegan's Bar and who were present at the time of the shooting. Also testifying was the police officer who fired the fatal bullets. He testified without the protection of immunity from prosecution. A second police officer who discharged his weapon at the scene also testified, and he too testified without the protection of immunity from prosecution. In addition to those referenced above, three civilians, including a family member, testified as to their contacts with Mr. Henry prior to the incident that resulted in his death. The grand jury also heard testimony from, one, three emergency medical personnel who rendered treatment at the scene to Mr. Henry, the front-seat passenger in Mr. Henry's car, and the police officer; two, the emergency room physician who rendered treatment at the Westchester County Medical Center to Mr. Henry, the front-seat passenger and the police officer; three, the Westchester County Medical Examiner who performed the autopsy on Mr. Henry; and four, the surgeon who treated the police officer who fired the fatal shots. More than 100 exhibits were admitted into evidence before the grand jury. Included among these exhibits were diagrams, photographs, aerial photographs, medical records, phone records, ballistics evidence, police radio transmissions, and physical evidence collected from the scene. Video recordings were taken by a civilian witness. Surveillance films secured from two commercial establishments located in the shopping center, and a video recording from a police vehicle responding to the scene that captured some of the events at issue were all played before the grand jury. As to physical evidence, there was testimony from additional police officers in connection with the collection and introduction of evidence. A ballistics expert and two accident reconstruction experts, one of whom was a civilian witness, testified. There was also testimony from six forensic scientists from the Westchester County Department of Laboratories and Research, where the forensic examination of Mr. Henry's automobile, as well as other physical evidence, took place. The scientists included experts in toxicology, DNA, and trace evidence. After due deliberation on the evidence presented in this matter, the grand jury found that there was no reasonable cause to vote in indictment. I would like to thank the 23 citizens of this county who comprised the grand jury for their service, for the time and effort they devoted to this investigation, and for the careful manner in which they discharged their solemn duty. That is the press release of Westchester County District Attorney Janet DeFiore that was released this afternoon, and as you just heard, in her words, the decision of the grand jury was not to indict any of the officers involved, and in particular, our police officer, Aaron Hess, who was involved in that incident. Clearly, this is as tragic an incident as one could imagine, and as you know from previous statements we have all made, one that has left this village very much shaken. And tonight, we are appreciative, as the Westchester District Attorney is, of the service rendered by the grand jury. We are appreciative of the fact that our officer, Aaron Hess, has not been indicted, and we are saddened, as we have been since the day this happened, on behalf of the Henry family for their tragic loss, on behalf of Aaron and his family, and on behalf of every person, every Pace student, every police officer, everyone who was involved in this incident, which we hope will never be repeated. So as you may be aware from press reports, the Henry family, as well as a number of others, have begun the process of filing lawsuits that will involve the Village of Pleasantville, that will limit our opportunity to speak on lots of different matters, but it's important to report what happened today with the results of the grand jury hearing. So we will report as we can as we go forward in the process on what we find out about the lawsuits that we anticipate will come from here. So I thank you for your attention, appreciate your patience in reading that long statement, and we will now move on. We have a number of resolutions on various subjects, one of the last of which is...
Or you have written something?
Yes, I will inquire on them. The last of the resolutions involves a discussion about raising parking permit fees by an average of 10%, and that is a subject that has raised a lot of commentary, both in the village and on some email lists, so there may be comment on that as well. And if there's anyone who would like to speak at this point on a matter of any subject at all, you're welcome to come to the podium if you're so inclined. Okay, with that, we'll move to the resolution, Steve, number 12.
Resolve the pre-check register dated February 14, 2011, covering check numbers 68497 through 68651 has been reviewed and are hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $211,000, $211,911.85, sorry. Miscellaneous fund, $60. Water fund, $9,081.70. Capital fund, $8,018.50. Refuse fund, $10,861.27. The pool fund, $1,444.80. Trust and agency fund, $5,535.92. Total of $246,914.40.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I just had one about the salt and sand. Don't we contract with the county?
We are under the state bid requirement.
The state bid requirement. So is this just a payment toward this, or is this over and above?
No, 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 it's part of our annual...
I thought that was part of the...I thought we used everything we contracted for and had to buy more.
I'm not sure there's any more to be had.
Yeah.
You know, there really isn't much out there.
Westchester communities are suffering, as I'm sure they are all around the region. So, Brian?
I had a comment on, I always hate to do this, but on page 16, bottom of the page, we have an expense of $96.57 for Easter bags, and as usual, I'm opposed to public funding being involved in any kind of religious significance ceremony.
So you're not opposed to Valentine bags?
What are those, are those bags for the Easter egg hunt?
Probably for the...
Patty?
I would think that's what the vendor calls them, so the rein just takes a ride off the invoice.
So we do run, we're running an Easter egg hunt again?
Brian, can I suggest, actually, I think that that, can I suggest that we approve this check register? I mean, clearly those have been purchased, but engage a discussion with Rick about exactly what they're planning in the event that we decide otherwise. I assume that the total cost there is something like $50, so I do think it's a discussion we ought to have with them.
Yeah, I would only say, just for people who are watching and don't know that, I always complain about these kinds of things. It turns out that in our society, we have all kinds of people living here, not all of us, or not all, not everyone who lives here celebrates Easter, and I just think expanding public taxpayer funds for Easter celebration is inappropriate. I always have, in all the years I've been here, and so I object again.
Okay, understood, and we'll pursue that, would lead to finding exactly what is envisioned. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nor approve.
Mindy? Resolve that the board trustees reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, January 24, 2011, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? I might note that the meeting of January 24 included an extended discussion about proposed leaf blower regulations, and there were lots of people who commented, and I think, although there were, there was a technical problem at one point, I think most of that meeting is up on the web at PCTV76.org, so if anybody is interested in that subject, the discussion about potential leaf blower regulations, that whole discussion is available to you at PCTV76.org as an on-demand webcast, and I would encourage you to look at it. At the moment, where it was left is that there were a number of people who were interested in coming back and making a more formalized presentation against the idea, including a couple of local landscape firms, and at the moment, there isn't any resolution on the table to approve or reject such a thing. It's just a discussion that we've engaged in at the request of the Conservation Advisory Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve Jonathan.
Resolve that the board trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby accepts the resignation of the school crossing guard Janice Wilson effective immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I'd just like to thank her. She was, her crossing post was actually near my house, and so I saw her a couple of times every day, and, you know, she was a good crossing guard, and we appreciated her service.
Very difficult job to do, absolutely. Thank you.
Number 15.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby accepts the resignation from acting village justice Susan Galata effective March 31, 2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
Susan Galata has served as our acting village justice, that being the position that fills in for the village justice if the justice is unavailable, or if for some reason the village justice has a conflict with a case that's going on. Susan, though not called on frequently, has served ably and with integrity in every situation when asked to do so. She resigns for personal reasons, effective at the end of her present term on March 31, 2011, and we thank her for her service. I might add as well that any village residents who are interested in serving as acting village justice are encouraged to send a note, including a resume, to the attention of Patty Dwyer or Judy Weintraub, the village clerk here at Village Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, Steve, number 16.
Resolve that board trustees hereby accept the following donations to senior citizen programs. $100 was donated by Claire Casey Pitericki. $200 was donated anonymously. $500 was donated by Terrence Martell, and additional $500 was donated anonymously.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those of you who watch our meetings regularly know that this kind of resolution accepting donations for the senior program is, for the senior program is a frequent occurrence, and the fact that so many people contribute on voluntary contribution to support the program is an indication of the good things that go on there. Thank you so much to these contributors, and thanks so much to Vridya Pankati and her staff at the Senior Center for the good work they do. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. 17.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Day Committee to use Memorial Plaza for the Pleasantville Day celebration on Saturday, May 14, 2011, from 6:00 to 5:00 PM, and further, resolve that the board of trustees authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, May 14, 2011, and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Saturday, May 14, is the annual Pleasantville Day celebration. Mark your calendars. All in favor?
Aye.
I might also add that this annual event has been chaired by Ginny Brentano, a longtime village resident, and feels like she has run Pleasantville Day for a very, very long time. Remarkable loyalty to this project and a great job she does annually, so a shout to Ginny Brentano to thank her for the great work she does and for having done it so ably for so long. Number 18.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves and authorizes the village administrator to enter a cooperative purchase agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant for the purposes of purchasing highway construction materials.
I missed the clear point. I love it. I pulled it from last time, it just so happened.
It's a great card, please.
We're laughing, we're laughing because...
Yes, it's predisposed for the whole...
Last year, this same cooperative resolution was motioned by Jonathan and seconded by Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I thought Brian was going to object to it on religious grounds.
Let me just note that Peter Cilliano, who is the superintendent of highways in the town of Mount Pleasant, is our partner in this venture, and we have done this for some years running, so that we combine together to solicit bids for highway construction materials, including asphalt, stone, pipe, which are sand, calcium chloride, magnesium chloride, and block, and it's just one of a number of ways in which the village and the town are intertwined and work together. Number 119, Brian.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments. We are increasing revenue and expense for playground equipment state grant funding. So we are increasing by $19,900 the revenue budget code H030.3597, and we are also increasing the expense budget code H7110.201/114.30. And we are allocating revenue for disaster mitigation at Lake Street Pump House between federal and state aid, and we are taking $4,563 from Pump House federal aid and adding it in the budget to Pump House state aid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe the...
Yeah, I'll describe both of them. The first refers to state grants we just recently received for new playground equipment, and we have to recognize the receipt of that money, so it's basically just setting up the budget so we can spend that money down. We received $19,900 from the state of New York for two member items to purchase new equipment for, we're going to use this for Roseell Park. And the second budget amendment deals with money we received from FEMA from the March storms of 2010. A portion of their funds is matched by state aid, so we are recognizing that portion of the funds that come from New York State. This is to do some repairs to the retaining wall by the Lake Street Pump House.
So the playground equipment grants came through the offices of the now-retired Assemblyman Brodsky?
That is correct. Yes, they're member items from Assemblyman Brodsky.
I also want to note that that will be a community-built playground.
I know, I'm excited for that.
So we got permission to do that.
Good next project.
And they are cutting it down to that amount. Their quote came in a little high, and we told them they can't spend any more than what we got, so...
I believe they'll be able to work with the budget.
And they're going to, they are, they're working with it, and this is replacing equipment that we had to pull out. It's not adding new equipment.
So just as Mindy pointed out, which was helpful, the grant from the state, which is actually the accumulation of some monies that were due a long time ago and never arrived, produces $19,900 in revenue, and that is the maximum that we will spend on these playground improvements, that obviously being a project that would be difficult to be thinking of undertaking in the absence of a specific grant for it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, number 21. Steve?
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby refers the following proposed amendments to the R-03 and M-1 to the Planning Commission for Common...
Yes, right, go ahead.
Regarding the R-03 zoning district, it's proposed to add retail sales incidental to a warehouse or light manufacturing use located on the same lot and permitted in an adjacent zoning district, provided that the products sold on the premises are stored and/or are produced on the same premises, and furthermore occupy no more than 15% of the gross floor area of the business. And secondly, also within the R-03 districts, restaurants would be allowed with catering halls and outdoor dining facilities as accessory use. Also within the M-1 zoning district, that district would be amended to allow restaurants, catering halls, and the outdoor dining accessory use.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a referral to the Planning Commission of these zoning amendments, which tinker modestly with the terms of the R-03 and M-1 zoning districts, the R-03 district being the district that was created several years ago along the frontage properties of Marble Avenue, and the M-1 is our light manufacturing districts, which are primarily the back of properties along, the back properties along Marble Avenue, for example, in the area of MLA and Captain Lawrence, and also over on Tompkins Avenue with warehouses...
That's right.
...adjacent to the railroad tracks. So whenever there's a proposal to change a zoning code, part of the process is to refer it to the Planning Commission for Common to get their input, and then there would be a public hearing on it and then a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Number 22.
Oh, that's me. Appropriate. Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following parking permit fees for the fiscal year 2011/2012, effective June 1, 2001. The residential rate for Plaza and Wheeler will go from $500 to $550. Rebecca and Bedford Terrace from $260 to $285. Cooley-Manville, Cooley-Bedford, and Village Lot will go from $350 to $385. Hopper Street will go from $200 to $220. The business rate lots, Plaza and Wheeler, from $540 to $590. Rebecca and Bedford Terrace will stay the same at $380. Cooley-Manville, Cooley-Bedford, and Village Lot, $480 to $500. Hopper Street, $200 to $220.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's been a lot of discussion about this, as I mentioned earlier, around on the street and also on some of the email lists that exist, and a lot of strong feeling on various subjects, and let me just start by speaking for myself. We confront, as I've said in the past, a circumstance where we have all kinds of rising expenses, and we are also working extremely hard, not only to reduce expenses in the coming year, but to reduce the long-term cost to government, or in the midterm and the long term. That includes some careful thought about a whole spectrum of things, including, as I discussed earlier, the idea, which may or may not turn out to be possible, of selling this hall building and buying a Methodist church as a... this hall building and buying a Methodist church as a village hall that we think in the long run would both reduce our overall costs and return a significant building to the tax roll. So what I want to be clear about here is that the proposal to increase these rates reflects a suggestion on my part that we haven't adjusted these parking permit rates for about eight years. And what we proposed is, as you just heard in the report of the resolution, a modest increase that not only makes some increases that are maximum $50 a year, but also adjusts the business rates a little bit, because when we reviewed them, we felt as though there was some, a little bit of unfairness in a couple of the rates, particularly those for the lots like Rebecca Lane and Bedford Terrace, which are good places for people to park who work in businesses and are living their car there for a good, long chunk of time. So as Mindy reported when she read the resolution, the resident rates, which are slightly lower than the business rates, would go up an average of 10%. That would be a total of $50 a year increase for Plaza and Wheeler, total of $25 a year increase for Rebecca and Bedford Terrace, total of $35 increase for Cooley-Manville, Cooley-Betford, and the Village Lot, which is the one behind Marmaduke, and a total of $20 a year for Hopper Street. In the case of the business rates, the Plaza and Wheeler lots, the ones right downtown, would increase $50 as they would for residents. But the Rebecca Lane and Bedford Terrace rates would not be changed at all. The old rate was $380, and the new rate is $380. The logic being there, you know, our thinking that the difference between the rates for the close-in lots and the ones more at the perimeter of the downtown was not as big as it was for residents, and we tried to even that out. The increase for business rates, Cooley-Manville, Cooley-Betford, and Village Lot, would be $20 a year, and for Hopper Street, also $20 a year. We've received a letter from the Chamber of Commerce opposing this increase, and also received a letter from Tony Emerson individually opposing this increase. Anybody else have comments they want to make?
I don't know if you want to entertain a discussion about this tonight or just do a straight-up vote. There's been a lot of discussion already. There's been back and forth. I don't have a problem with just doing the vote, but if you want to have a further discussion...
As you wish. No need to say anything unless you wish.
I have one question on a potential compromise, albeit it's more, I'd say, in my opinion, it might be more symbolic, but Hopper Street, we don't sell out. And I know that Mindy and Steve have had an issue with raising the rates because they feel that this might create burden on some people. If we left that flat and didn't raise it, so that there was an alternative, that we didn't raise rates on a lot, albeit it's a lot that people may have to walk, you know, an extra couple minutes from, but at least it's an alternative to not raising the rates. So if they have a means by which to not feel as burdened upon, would you feel that to be a means by which we could take care of some of the people and that might have an issue?
I think, as I was thinking about this a little bit further after our last discussions, I was thinking, you know, there are a couple of levels at which I look at this. For one thing, to the extent that our rates may be, from a market standpoint, artificially low, they subsidize us leaving a greener footprint, or let's say, a lower-carbon footprint, because they're encouraging people to use the train here, and there's supportive here of mass transportation and also parking off the street for the merchants to free up street parking for more folks who are shopping at the store. So I think that, as I look at it, I look at it more as a government providing something that may be below market value, but they're doing it for a public purpose. And recapturing the value of what's brought to the community by the public purpose, to me, is hard to encapsulate in a formulaic approach. We do a lot of things that, we provide a lot of services that aren't being paid for at a fully vested rate by individuals who make use of those services. And in particular with this service that we provide, I think there are benefits on multiple levels that I feel comfortable with not raising because of those levels. And I just mentioned a few, but, you know, my sense is that we have this terrible economy going on. People are being hit hard with their jobs. A lot of people are taking reductions in pay or effectively by paying higher health and other costs, or just taking it to keep their jobs. But as I mentioned, I also think that it provides a tremendous benefit to the village and keeps us kind of a friendly place to our own citizens to be able to offer, you know, a perk like this at a rate that I think is, you know, it's a way of helping our own residents and merchants sort their way through these times and even in flusher times. But I would feel much more comfortable doing this or raising rates or looking at the whole structure of how we allocate spaces to local residents versus out-of-town residents, particularly when additional spaces come online with the construction of parking facilities in the future with the Lane Plumbing property. And I just feel that it's, for what we get from this, as I mentioned initially, and I don't mean this as a soundbite at all, but I feel that for what we get from it, you know, we don't, we're not putting out, in my view, a strong message to the citizenry of the village and for those visiting, that we're, you know, trying to work to help people through this economic time and also support people parking in the lots and not feeding those meters all the time, which becomes more and more economically feasible the more we raise the lot prices, so.
And yet, Steve, it's a modest increase. And I mean, I understand what you're saying. I certainly understand the other side, or, I mean, I'm in favor of this. And the reason that I'm in favor of this is not because I want to raise fees on anybody, or, as you know, all five of us are spending an inordinate amount of time trying to cut expense from government in this town. So to have this represented as anything like, you know, we're just willingly raising fees to, you know, to make people unhappy and to harm people who are otherwise hurting, you know, that, I understand how people would see that and understand how the editor of a local paper can editorialize on that, but that's not what this is. What this is, is a very modest increase to catch up with sort of the cost of living index. And just, you know, I mean, it's literally pennies a day, but when we get to the budget part of our job, we are looking at sums that are $150, $200. We're, we go line by line. This is a very difficult time for us, and we're doing the best we can to keep the budget down and keep any increase down. So what we have here is kind of a user tax, a slight user tax, that in the end will give us, you know, people can say it's too minimus, it's too small to worry about, but what's the fee figure? It's like $13,000 or something that we benefit. And to us, you may say, well, that's not enough to make this kind of a political move. And yet, to us, $13,000 is a lot, and people who are on fixed incomes and people who are barely making it here and aren't going to the city, it kind of lets us hold back the cost, however minimal, that hold back the tax increase on those people. So it's just, I don't know. I understand it's a bad, I certainly understand, and you have been proven right, that the ruckus that ensued here because of this idea might not be worth the $13,000. And yet, you know, I'm willing to say it is worth it, and I just want to, I just want to reemphasize the fact that every single person on this board, regardless of whether they vote yea or nay on this, every single person is working as hard as we can possibly work to not increase taxes on anybody. So that's what I have to say.
I just want to add one thing, because I think I'm very much on the record that I don't agree with this at all, but this has not been a model to compare these prices to what they would cost on an open market if we opened it up to nonresidents. It's not the model this village ever used. So we cannot use that now to say we're offering any type of subsidy for these spaces or whatever. It's never a model we use. We never opened it up to people other than village residents and businesses. That's it. That's all we sold these spaces to. So that's all we can compare to. And in that respect, our rates are very much in line with other villages in the area that do the same thing. So with that being said, I, you know, I don't agree with this.
Our rates now, I mean...
Our rates now, village to village, for resident rates, are in line, as they stand right now.
And it will be after we vote, if we vote this up.
They'll be probably a little higher.
No, I think they're a little lower.
Well, from the surveys I did, and I surveyed 70 villages, were, in some cases, were a little higher, and in some cases, we're right with them. So I don't find anywhere we're any lower on any of them. Maybe Hopper Street, yeah. So, but, you know, we've debated this. We, I respect your viewpoints. I just don't agree with them, and I just think we should take a vote at this point because there's no reason to keep going over and over.
Well, I do think there are some comments people have felt free to make, and others may too. Do you want anything, John?
I mean, it's open, Sid. I just...
Okay. So let me just add on my own behalf that we're all in this together. And I don't, that's true of the five of us, but that's true of the community at large, including the people who commute from the station and need to park near it, and that includes those residents and nonresidents who are employees or owners of businesses and offices downtown. We're all in the boat together, and we're all rowing hard together. I heartily endorse everything you said, Steve, about the appropriateness of government making possible services that people need, and I wholeheartedly endorse everything that's been said about the difficult times in which we live. And the reality here is that the reason these rates haven't changed over the last eight years is because for six or seven of those years, it was easy not to do it because we were in a relatively flush position based on positive, positive economic returns. We're not in that circumstance now. $13,500 is not enough money to make a material change in the village's overall circumstance, but what it reflects for me is the recognition that we are all in this together, and it's going to require some harder pulling on every oar, and that includes the people who have the advantage of having a parking permit. That includes the taxpayer. That includes the people that work here, and that includes the people who work for the village, from whom we will be asking more and will be seeking some concessions as well. So the reality...
Just to punctuate that, Peter, I've had a lot of people come up to me since the whole ruckus and have said that they're, they think it's perfectly reasonable. I've had anybody come up and said, you're out of your mind, with the exception of the two letters that we received and the information off the website. So I think that includes businesses, business owners as well. So I think that they all recognize that it's a community effort that they're trying to put forth here.
Then I will say that if...
The business owners didn't get hit with the MTA increase and subway increase either.
Well, okay.
And I'm all by support of businesses. It's just a...
All right. So then, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Just need a second. I just need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Motion passes three to two. I would say to the village that if as much input is received and as much effort is expended on behalf of the board on every $13,500 subject we have, you will be well-served, and we will try to serve you in precisely that way. So we are working pretty darn hard here to try to find a way to slow down the train of government. I'm sure all of you read in the newspaper the same things that are going on in other communities around us than in the state and at the county level and at the federal level. The reality here is that we are confronted with declining revenues in a whole series of places, most particularly a declining tax base driven by tax grievances, and at the same time being handed with mandates that include wildly spiking numbers of our mandated payments to the New York State Pension Fund, as well as increased costs for health care and all of the increased costs that all of us confront in our daily lives. And I can assure you that you have five people sitting here who live that every day, who walk the walk and talk the talk, and I am proud of the fact that it's a board that is vigorously debating each and every subject, large and small, and there are sometimes occasions when a split vote reflects the fact that you've got people who are working pretty hard for you. So thank you all. Any additional comment? New business, further discussion? All right.
Then I'm still waiting for my Valentines that nobody got. Except for Patty. Oh, excuse me. Jonathan did bring sweets. Okay, sorry. You're right. Thank you, Tanya.
There's a brass band and a bunch of men in tuxedos outside. I think they didn't feel comfortable coming in.
I would have wrapped much of the bay tree champagne with my husband, to be honest.
Well, I hope you help you with it.
I thank you all for watching. We'll be going into executive session to discuss notice of claim that we received from BGB Realty against the Village of Pleasantville, and we will also be discussing executive session, some settlement discussions regarding tax certioris, and we will be discussing some personnel matters and PBA negotiation updates with Patty Dwyer, the administrator, and with Chief Charlitty. So I thank you for your attention. We look forward to being again together two weeks from today at our next regular meeting, Monday, February 28, and again be reminded, those of you who are interested in the subject of a potential relocation of Village Hall to the Methodist Church, 7:00 p.m. on Monday, the 28th, will be an opportunity to discuss that in an informal work session discussion that's not part of the televised meeting, just to make sure we're aware of the concerns that any community members may have. So I thank you for that and appreciate your interest. Good night. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have adjourned. Thank you. See you in two weeks.